Four twenty five and then they're all done the testing.
What's the?
We budgeted around six nine nine.
Eighty three to two hundred and sixty five.
There's a contractor doing it.
Try.
Try.
Did y'all hear that? The rates go from a low of eighty three dollars for a technician to two hundred and sixty five dollars an hour for principal engineer. And they're, you know, seventy, one seventy six for site vehicle, that's how it count. But, uh, you know, it's, it's a, it's a pro rated or a tip rate.
Well, we have to have them and obviously they're very good at what they do. Or they are good enough at what they do regardless, and we gotta have them, you know, the D E Q. Says we have to have them.
So we compared their rates while they're doing the same function and they are actually a little cheaper than some of the other ones. Um, whenever we did the construction or the excavation of sales eight and nine, we actually presented two or three proposals. Um, so we're testing. Which kind of meant the doctorcy for this project.
Eric, didn't we save some money on the, uh, play?
We saved money on the total construction. Um, I think we budgeted over five billion and they, uh, we came in under five.
Right.
So, I mean, we, we, we've saved more than twenty thousand at this point, plus we're gonna save a little bit more that we're not having to borrow since you guys purchased the property. Uh, so that's been actually knocked out four hundred fifty thousand on the.
So, we're still.
I'll make a motion that we accept that contract.
I've got a motion by Barry.
Second.
That's the second by Bison, all in favor and all opposed. Motion carries. And item twenty one, award contracted to relocate two Moniting wells at the solid waste landfill. The engineering firm for the Sabine Parish Police Jury, Mayor of Engineering. Has, uh, solicitor pro- pro- proposals for the relocation of Moniting Wells M W eleven and M W twelve at the solid waste. Landfill, the relocation of the wells is needed to accommodate the construction of sales eight and nine liner system. So here we have, we had three bids on this, uh, correct, Mr. Bill?
Yes.
The first one was Artemon and Associates at thirty four nine fi- nine hundred and fifty dollars. The second one was Gulf South Engineering and Testing, thirty one thousand one hundred and twenty seven dollars. And the third one was Foyer and I don't D.
The.
Deabrew Engineering LLC, sixty four thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars. So.
I'm making a motion, we accept the low bid. Second. Nothing else. We gotta move them.
I've got a motion by Bison. Any other discussion on this item? I've got a motion by Bison, a second by, who was that?
Bruce.
Bruce?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Nah.
All opposed? That motion carries, seven two. All right, next item is to adopt the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire for twenty twenty four annual audit. This is something we do annually, Mr. Bill?
Yes, we have to do it by state law. It's a questionnaire that I'll prepare and it'll be attested to by, uh, Richard Spoldo, President, and move forward that to the, uh, Lee and his crew. They have to review it before they start the audit. And, uh, this is something that we have to do it.
One of them got tos.
I'll do it. I'll make that motion.
I got a motion by Barry.
Second.
Second by Bruce. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven two. Item twenty three, uh, twenty three, approve annual corporate endeavor agreement with the Sabine Parish Dixie Youth. Every year, the Sabine Parish Police Jury provides the Sabine Parish Dixie Youth Funds, which are split equally between the five municipalities that participate in the program. This amount of funding is included into twenty twenty five Police Jury Budget. So it, again, there's something that we fund this group every year.
How much do we fund them with?
Uh, ten thousand.
And if that furnishes one kid a baseball and a glove, keeps him off the street smoking dope, we weren't, we just spent that money well.
I'll make the.
Cause a lot of them kids can't afford to go play if they don't have.
We've been doing it how, how long?
Been doing it ever since I remember.
Yeah, as long as I remember too. How long, Hootie? You ought to know better than anybody.
And I look at it this way, guys, uh, this is a ten thousand dollar investment in the youth of our parish, and that's about all we invested.
Well, I've been over to Zawali, twenty nine years. You know, myself and others too, and others, but the Dixie Youth have been going on since nineteen, it's nineteen seventy six, actually. There were a league before that, but same thing, we're based on.
Hootie, won't you tell them what that money's used for? Because some people don't know.
Most of the, the money is used for startup, the, you know, startup money, like concession stands, buying balls and, and equipment for, you know, for teams, you know? As far as us buying bats and gloves and stuff, we don't do that for each kid, every kid, unless it's, you know, unless it's a kid. Most of the time, if a coach sees a kid can't afford it, we, we just all get out there and find the money somewhere. But this startup money really helps, helps the groups get started, you know? Cause our concession usually costs us around from seventeen to eighteen, uh, eighteen hundred dollars to get started, and equipment is around twelve hundred, you know, to get started.
How much money do they make back out of that seventeen hundred? Where does that go? It just keeps revolving?
We, we.
Ompires.
Ompires, you gotta pay them.
Into our, into our, our money, but we pay umpires every night. Generally, I, I think last year, just in Zawali alone, we paid up fifty five hundred dollars in umpires. Used to, it was just somebody was volunteering, you know? Now, it's not.
All that money.
Nobody wants money.
And somebody gotta pay the electric bill too.
Which, most of the fields, most cities are paying the electric bills and work.
And the maintenance on the ball field?
I would say this, and, and I can't talk for the rest of the town, but in Zawali, when we finish up at the end of the year, if we prop, if we have fifteen hundred dollars, we will. That's the reason we have a banquet at the middle of the, in September, we try to raise a little money. The rest of these places do the same thing, and they do something. It, it's a big cost from, um, it's a big cost.
It's a big start for a bunch of kids too.
Oh, yeah. I figure this year we'll have, I know Zawali's already signed up two hundred. So around the parish, you're gonna have fourteen hundred kids. And that's just Dixie Youth, that's not counting other kids that want to play on the field, travel team and stuff like that. But I thank y'all for the parish, thank y'all for stepping up.
I'm making a motion.
Got a motion by Ramidis?
I'm second.
Sorry, it's a Taylor.
A second by, who was it?
Taylor.
Taylor?
Go behind, we did it all.
I don't make those mad. All right, all, all in favor? Uh, all opposed? Alrighty. Consider abolishing the position of laid asphalt lay down crew foreman and create two lead operator positions. Resolution ninety sixty nine adopted July fifteenth, twenty twenty two, established employment position of a foreman slash paver operator for the lay down, asphalt lay down crew. The rate of pay for the foreman paver operator was set at twenty eight dollars per hour. The position of the foreman paver operator has recently been vacated, and the road superintendent has requested Police Jury to abolish the position of the asphalt lay down crew foreman and create two employment positions for a lead operator at a rate of twenty three dollars an hour. Any questions on this?
What do they make now?
What, what we're doing, the numbers are exactly the same. Actually, with all the additional cost, with the current staff of seven, it's about a five thousand dollar reduction when you talk about.
But what's the two lead guys, they getting a raise? Is that what it's doing?
The way I calculated, I haven't heard you.
Yeah, I apologize because we had the convention, um, there was just a slight discrepancy with the Excel spreadsheet. So it was a calculated, and it was all said and done. It, it is gonna be a more, it's gonna cost more, um, not as originally as much as we had projected. I think, I have to go pull the spreadsheet, Mr. of Bruce, but I'm thinking like maybe twenty, twenty five thousand dollars more per year.
So hourly rate, these two lead guys make more per hour than they were making?
What we have.
How much more?
They're jumping from eighteen to twenty three dollars per hour.
We had it.
So that's five dollars a person versus, that's ten dollars an hour versus twenty eight dollars. Right? You was paying your lead man twenty eight, and these guys are getting five dollars more per hour per man. So that's two men, ten dollars an hour.
It's a wash. All positions, if we had all positions at eighteen dollars an hour, then we'd have ten dollars an hour left with the twenty eight.
And these guys have been doing this anyway, right?
Yeah. Well, no, they're not, they're not doing the foreman work. They're not doing the lead work. So we're splitting that, we're splitting that ten and giving these two five a piece. So the money's a wash, it's the same.
But you have already done some work with these two guys operating, correct?
Guys have been.
And they did good.
They, they did this for the last, they, for the last month.
Yeah, when your lead guy, when your lead guy left, your foreman left, these guys stepped up on their own.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
These guys, who have been doing it the whole time.
Right, but, but without a foreman. See, the foreman's been gone, and these guys stepped up. And, and really, you saving fifteen dollars an hour without that foreman, is that right?
No, it's the, the hourly rate is a wash.
I don't get you.
All right, you're saying that, but I'm looking at our two accountants, and I ain't getting the same story, so would somebody fill me in on the real number?
Yeah, Camille keeps sitting over shaking his head.
I know.
We reworked the spreadsheet. Ally did, took about a day to do it, and I'm sure she did it.
Yeah, and there was a discrepancy, and it's, it's, no fault against you, but when, when the, when you calculated it, it was based upon one of the existing crew members that you're trying to promote, it took his rate as we're paying him that right now. So you took, you know, you're saying we're already paying him the twenty three dollars per hour, but really, you should have gone back and looked at what are we paying them now compared to what we will be paying them?
I didn't make the spreadsheet, I just.
Yeah, yeah, but it's just, yeah, there was a miscalculation.
So, so if we're not, if, if we're gonna get into that detail, then what I'd like to talk about, I'm talking about base rate. When we talk about positions here, we talk about base rates. Y'all correct me if I, if I was speaking out, out of turn. The spreadsheet that was created, originally, well, the spreadsheet that was created, put out all costs associated with each employee, not position, with each employee. And it gave their, their insurance rates, it calculated that. When we hire people, we don't talk about insurance rates. We don't determine that you're gonna have, you're a single man, and you're not gonna have a family, or you're gonna have a wife, or he's gonna have six kids. It doesn't talk about those rates. So those rates fluctuate with who we put in that position, right? So when we're talking about these rates in here, I don't feel like that it is appropriate today to talk about the overall cost when we're talking about people, right? Because tomorrow, this guy could leave, and we put someone else in there, and those rates might change. So for the conversation we're having today, I feel like that what we should talk about is the base rate. And the base rate for the positions is gonna be a wash. The base rate for all seven people in that crew, what I'm proposing or asking y'all to consider, is gonna be, there's gonna be no change.
So it's on other stuff is where it's gaining more money, Ally?
Yeah, like you say, at some point, let's say you hired a man, I, this, I might use this term loosely, but let's say he brought in a new guy, and he's like, he's referring to the best rate pay, yeah, it would be twenty three dollars per hour. But the two in mind that are being considered to be promoted from a crew leader to a lead operator, that eighteen dollar difference to twenty three dollars. Well, then again, those two guys have been with us for more than two years, which means they're, but they're not just twenty three dollars an hour, you know?
They got stiff increases.
We have to consider their two dollars per hour increase that you guys agreed two years ago.
But we did that for all employees, so we can't, uh, we can't talk about that today and penalize these guys because everybody got the two dollars an hour.
We're not.
Oh, we're not trying to get to that, we're just trying to figure, you're paying this guy twenty eight. These two guys get five dollars an hour more, so that's ten dollars an hour between the two. So you still fifteen dollars cheaper than this twenty eight.
No, because it's basically, and you don't, you're not considering their step plan, which Ally is considering.
Mm-hmm.
So their actual pay is gonna be maybe twenty five?
Uh, I think when I calculate, Mr. Barry, the two guys coming in around the same time, I think twenty six dollars and thirty eight cents will be their, you probably.
So that's their.
However, the two dollars an hour, I don't feel like we ought to discuss in here, because the two dollars of, either current employees, they're getting that two dollars an hour in the job they were doing already. So, so to add that to their value of conversation, I feel it's unfair for us to discuss.
Well, I look at it as a different picture. I look at it, we getting two lead.
Yep.
Lay down people for twenty three dollars an hour.
Same money, at the same base rate.
Where we were paying one guy twenty eight dollars an hour, we're now getting two guys, and, and, and I won't, and me and Bobby discuss this a lot, and I know, Ally, I, I respect you and Mr. Bill with your numbers, I understand. But our intentions are, at any time, we could take these guys and we could put one over here and one over here. Cause they both can do the same job, we don't need one lead man. We could put him on the lay down machine over here, we could put him on the oil sand over here, we could split them, so.
We're gaining ground.
And, and we growing, you know?
We got to get that going, so we got to have.
And I agree, and I agree with Mr. Ramidis, I, I went out, I watched some of the work that they've done, and the two guys that they're talking about, well, you know, uh, nothing against nobody, but they the one's doing the work. They the one was on the lay down machine laying the asphalt.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, anyway, nevertheless, I'm in support of it, I know it's gonna, I know in the end, there is a little difference because of their step plan. And their, and their, uh, fringe benefits that they have, I do understand that.
But we understand your condition.
But, 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 you know, I'm looking at the position itself, at the base rate. You know, I mean, you could take a road foreman that's been here ten years, well, surely he's making more than a road foreman that started yesterday. Cause he's been here ten years. But anyway, that's just, you know, I, I think I support this, but that's just me. Uh, I think that we're growing, and we need to be moved.
I'm making a motion.
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Eric.
Bo.
Bo got him one.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor, uh, all opposed? That motion carries, thank you, guys. All right. Item twenty, where we at, deal twenty five?
Yes, okay. Good, that was seven two?
Seven two, yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
All right, also, item twenty five is consider approving payment of fifty dollars per month for the busy use of personal cell phone for the two lead operators at asphalt lay down crew.
I'm making a motion, we approve the fifty dollars a month for these guys. They gotta have a phone, we can get a hold of.
Do we have any discussions on this matter? We have any discussions?
Yeah, that's a bunch of crap. I don't care what anybody says.
Okay.
Use your own dang telephone. I have to pay for mine, ain't nobody paying for my phone. I get tired of that crap right there, y'all. That's senseless. But y'all, 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 y'all do it, whatever, but I don't agree with that.
If they got a phone, but if they ain't got a phone, we can't talk to them.
Ronnie.
Most everybody's got a phone.
Anybody in this room ain't got a phone? Everybody got a phone nowadays.
But.
Uh, yeah, y'all go ahead, go ahead, I just put my two cents in.
Okay, but these ain't the only two positions they have.
I agree, and I voted against it.
Fifty dollars for everybody for it, huh?
No, that already is, so I mean, I've voted against it every time.
But, any other discussions? Fifty dollars is a lot cheaper than paying the whole phone bill.
Uh, I agree.
Yeah, we tried that.
We don't try that, and it didn't work. So, we don't try that, we had.
You know, and this is not for all the employees, that's for your lead operator.
This is for your foremans.
I wanna amend the agenda.
Uh?
I wanna amend the agenda, did y'all pay me fifty dollars more for my cell phone?
Well, you put it on, you put it on the agenda next month, we gonna put it. Uh, but anyway, I got a motion by, oh, what I was gonna say is all our road foremans and our, uh, anybody in the supervised position has a phone, and we give them fifty dollars a month toward their phone because they're using their personal phone for business. Correct, Bill?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So, and it's a lot cheaper than, uh, just, just to give them fifty than us purchase and pay them their phone bills for. We've done, we done.
Been there and done that.
You had lost phones and everything else.
Cut their phones off because they had trackers on it.
Yeah, they did that.
Yes, repeated.
And then, and then some of those services we have out, and I, I don't remember which one, but on the north end, they had, those phones were no use to us because they would have to use a personal phone anyway because they didn't get service up there. Anyway, I got a motion by Bison, second by Eric. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed?
Eh.
No, both.
No, both. So that's gonna be six one two, Bill?
Six two, I said, mate.
All right.
You can speak up there loud, speak up.
That's gonna be five two two.
Call y'all, then they gonna say, whoa. Oh, and Brad.
Did you drive up there, they gonna have that phone doing it? Learn that much, yes, looking for.
All right, item twenty six, to approve repairs to solid waste landfill D six dozer. S W three seventy eight, the solid waste committee met Fri- met February the tenth, twenty, twenty twenty five, and consider repairing the solid waste landfill dozer. And the estimated cost repair will be around seventy thousand. Solid Waste Committee recommends repairing the dozer.
Is this our dozer?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now that's for the engine.
Let the public know that the, that the landfill, they pay for this stuff. The landfill generates its own money. I don't want public thinking that we're pulling this out of the general fund all the time, because everything on this agenda's been about the landfill, they do that.
And the landfill, the landfill takes care of itself, and as.
And hopefully, it's gonna take care of roads here pretty quick.
And you could go in, last year, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, in twenty twenty four, you can go back and you can look at some of these, uh, funds that were dedicated or, or gave to all our road districts. Uh, a lot of those funds come from the landfill.
Right, right, and that's why I'm saying, and it's gonna eventually take care of a lot of roads and stuff.
Yeah, so what we're considering is, we'll consider the next item with this, that we're getting ready to fix it and put it up for sale and get our money back. Isn't that the same dozer?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I think they ought to take that into consideration when we're talking about fixing it. The intention is to fix it and sell it, get our money back.
And this seventy thousand was to repair the engine and redo recon the transmission, so we'll, we'll basically have a dozer with the recon engine, recon trans, and then we're gonna put it up for sale.
What's wrong with it? Have you got anybody to look at this tape that's worth unfix?
Pete ain't here, I was going to say, I'll look for Pete.
Oh.
He's not here. Uh, we discussed.
That stuff all the time, don't they?
Barry, you may have to.
People give big money to that stuff, y'all.
I don't have my notes for that either. But we discussed this piece of equipment here, and I'm, and I'm just gonna throw it out, but I may be wrong. I'm thinking this thing has nine thousand hours on it roughly, am I, am I correct?
That's right, I see it.
Uh, if, as it is, it's no use to us, it's really no value to it right now. Even if you try to surplus it, you're not gonna get nothing for it. You, if, from what I understand, I, I guess Pete talked with the people. And it's, it's, it's not gonna bring you anything, so the only thing that we can do is invest this to get it fixed, and we also consider keeping it for a spare, but then the committee rethought it several, look, let's just surplus it, sell it, get what we can out of it, and we go into leases. That was our way out. The other way, we're gonna have a piece of equipment, now this is just a Band-Aid. To fix it right, it's gonna cost about a hundred and thirty thousand. But still, again, it's got nine thousand hours on it roughly, and if the life of it's gone.
But, and that's, that's fine, however y'all do this, but just, y'all remember, like, we put that surplus up for auction on the, whatever, all the time, you know? I got a real good friend, Ronnie, you know him, Mike Peterson from Lake Charles, dear friend of mine, this, he puts on equipment sales all over the country. He will come, any of this equipment we have, he will come and he'll, y'all, I've seen them dozers that didn't even run, they wouldn't even crank. Undercarriage gone, I've seen them bring thirty five, forty thousand dollars. Because people knows they've spent seventy on it, they gonna have operating chain, you know, and they gonna way cheaper than buy a one, that's, that's running, you know?
Well, we use gov deals.
True.
And we've been very successful with gov deals.
Well.
And they're points to the whole country.
We sold stuff that we didn't think right here would bring us anything, and there's a guy might come from Mississippi over here and pay top dollar for it, and never, we couldn't get fifteen hundred for it.
That's, that's why that is down there.
We've been, we've had good experience with just gov deals, and that, and that's our intentions, is to get it where it's running, and, uh, and I feel we'll, we'll, you know, we'll come out better this way, what the committee did, feel we'll come out better this way than just settling where it's at now.
Cause it's just a boat anchor right now.
Yeah, yeah.
They, uh, this is overhaul job, the hundred and thirty was to put a new engine in it. But even this one, the, the repair job is supposed to have a year warranty, so when we put it up for auction, we're gonna have that listed with a year warranty from CAT. And, you know, it's, these trackers, a- and I learned a long time ago, it's just crazy how horrible those conditions are. That trash eats these dozers up. I mean, just eats them up, and it's unbelievable how bad it is on them. But we decide that's the only way we can get anything out of it, because right now, if we put it up for sale with a bad engine and the transmission possibly needing repairing, which this, they said did overhaul it before, you know, they wouldn't do it without it having a trans too, final ride, and that's a good thing.
Yeah.
It wouldn't bring anything right now, you know?
What, what will it bring after you spend seventy five thousand?
You tell me, you the cat man, you the dozer man. What's a dozer with a year warranty on the motor and transmission warranty?
Nine thousand hours.
Ain't gonna have that on the motor.
It ain't gonna have that on motors, it's gonna have that, it's gonna have that on the undercarriage and all those.
Yeah, but.
And trash.
I'm sure the undercarriage don't have nine thousand hours on it, I mean, they probably done replaced it.
Yeah, they have.
They done replaced that for five thousand.
And, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, Bobby, we can set a minimum bid on this, and if we don't get it, but then we got a spare.
Yep.
So.
This D six, it should bring at the lowest a hundred and fifty with the nine.
And that gets us out of all of our business, and we start something different.
Yeah.
You need a motion?
I need a motion to, uh, fix it. Got a motion by Barry and a second by Ramidis to fix the dozer. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? That motion carries seven two. All right, on item twenty seven, now we need a motion to declare, once we get it fixed, to declare surplus and approve the sale of electronic auction by gov deals.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Bo. Second by Garcia. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, item, where we at, twenty eight. Adopt the resolution of support authorized in sports wagering in Sabine Parish. This should be in your mailboxes, uh, there was some literature on this. I don't know if y'all had time to look at it. There really is danger. I've had, I've had quite a few calls on this item. Uh, you know, when was it, two years ago or so, uh, it, it didn't pass here in Sabine, I think Sabine is one of the very few parishes that didn't pass it. Uh, but since then, I've had a lot of, uh, calls and concerns that wants the parish to, uh, consider putting this on the ballot. Uh, but we gotta, it's a process you gotta go through. We have to, uh, approve this by resolution, and then we send it on to the legislature and they deal with it from there. So, in saying that, I know it won't affect me any at all because I don't bet on it. I don't bet much at all, so, but anyway, there are people out there that do bets, and they going down to the parish lines all around us or even into Texas, and they're placing their bets.
They drive the Cessati all the time.
And so, by them doing that, those parishes there, they're, where they're placing their bets are getting that revenue, and I don't know how much it is.
Uh, there were some numbers that I got from a residential voters. Uh, I don't know if I put that in your packs or not. Minnesota Parish, that's what they're bringing in. If you don't have it, I'll be glad to show a copy of it. I mean, it was a significant amount of money, but again, it's money that we don't have now.
Where'd that go to?
How much was it?
Where'd that?
It goes to that parish. If they go to burning and place.
General Hall?
Yeah. But the, as it is, those parishes where they're placing their bets, those are, excuse me, those are the parishes that are receiving the revenue off of these bets. And so, uh, I know we have a, a lot of, uh, people here in Sabine that's doing it. And I, I don't see why they have to drive to another parish to place their bet when they can do it out of their own home. It's the same thing. We're just losing out of revenue. I mean, even if it's ten thousand or twenty thousand or whatever. You know?
Do I need to make a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. Any discussion? Any comments, discussion?
Okay.
I got a motion by Garcia.
Second.
Second by Bison. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So we got a five? Two-two.
Boy, y'all.
Ain't that something?
I ain't giving them none.
When he goes in that general fund, earmark it for us, not them.
Alright, we need a, item twenty-nine, authorized payment of food bills.
I'll make that a motion.
Got a motion by Bo.
Second.
Second by Eric. All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item thirty.
Make that motion.
Bo, that's appropriate transfer of five hundred thousand from the sales tax fund, Parishwide Transportation Act Fund for February twenty-twenty-five operation.
I'll say.
Motion by Bo, Eric, second. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Carries. Operations.
Committee reports.
Committee report.
I have something to say on this.
Okay.
I got hammered with phone calls about three weeks ago by a funeral. To be buried at the cemetery out here. Y'all, we, I know this may not come up often, but this come up, and we know nothing about this. Nobody does. Mr. Ruffin didn't. Nobody know, there's not a plot map? There, there's not nothing? And so, I mean, if we're gonna be over this, don't we need some kind of, little bit of guidance on this thing?
I bet we could find a firm somewhere that does that.
All these people out there does it. I know that, from being in the monument business. I know they come and plot out cemeteries, but, I mean, they was, there's a burying lady out here and.
Had to move over?
No, no, they just wanted to dig it. And I, and I couldn't tell them anything different besides, I talked to Amy at funeral, and I said, Amy? She said, Bo, we got to come up with something. I said, I understand, but I said, we don't have anything. I mean, I got ahold of Mr. Ruffin, we, we all, Mr. Ruffin said, Bo, ain't no plot map, ain't nothing. And they got ahold of you, didn't they, Bill?
No, but I, my first change.
Here, I.
They got ahold of you. It was me and you and Ruffin was in on this deal. That's right, and I.
Who's on that committee? You and Ruffin or who?
Me, Eric. I thought I'd give Eric's number, tell him to call him.
You should have, because since I've been over, um, me and Miss Sharon, I mean, we come up with some. Okay, and, you know, now, they got some requirements they gotta go by, but, you know, in the past, they didn't have anything, you're correct.
Yeah, and there's not markers or anything.
Now, they gotta get markers, you know, that's the only thing we ask for is, is a, you know, marker.
But those ones that don't have a marker, how do we know we ain't digging a burial or dig somebody up, you know? That's bad against the law. So, I mean, there needs to be some, something go on out there. I never thought being on that committee, I'd ever come up with anything, because I always think of y'all about that committee, but this has happened.
So, you chairman of this?
Yes.
Well, uh, work, work with whoever we have to and see what we can come up with for the next time.
Yeah, for somebody to map it.
Right.
Yeah. And it's, it's our cemetery?
Mm-hmm, yes.
We need a mouthful.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. We don't have. I did not. I didn't go out. I, it, it's getting full. I mean, I've been out there, but it's, it's getting pretty full, but it's the cemetery that.
Oh, yeah, I know where.
It's a pauper cemetery, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's.
There's still, visibly, there's still some gravel left, but we don't know what's under that.
That's right, right.
Well, and with that said, we might start looking for another location here pretty quick, which is getting that pool. But I don't understand, you don't know this person that we're talking about that was not a pauper? And I don't understand how you get in there, and I know a lot of people.
Raised, raised by her grandparents, and that's where they're buried. She wanted to be buried by her.
Well, I, I had a friend of mine that got buried out there that wasn't a pauper. Same deal, family was out there.
Yes.
But, I don't.
It blows my mind when I got the phone call from the family about this one burying mama, and I was like, oh, wow, man, I don't, I can't tell you nothing. I said, hang on, let me make some phone calls.
I don't understand, I don't guess we have any criteria how you can get buried there.
Yeah.
And that's not good, but I don't know. Let's come up with some rules.
I never thought of me being the chairman for the years I was the chairman over the, I, and I never got a phone call about it, but, you know, now it happens.
The only phone call I ever had about cemetery was it had a dead tree was gonna fall on the fence or something, you know, but about somebody being buried.
So, but it is something that happens, and we need to address it because.
It's gonna happen again.
It will happen again.
Any other committee reports? Operations?
Yeah, one thing I need to ask about, and I should have done it earlier, the jackbrake signs that go on office bins. Where are we at with that?
Down in Alexandria.
Yeah, give us an answer.
Oh, Ben, you said something about signs. What about Neil and the stop sign down in Florin? Have you checked with Derek Gandy? Have you said anything to the pipeline about that? Remember I called you about it?
No, we didn't want that to stay.
Okay, no. They are on me and on me about that.
Any other thing on the operations?
Uh-huh. Hey, if y'all don't notice, uh, you had your, your normal reports for your, uh, per, and citations, uh, but also on top of that, the short paper is, uh, beginning of the year, I give y'all an annual report, but before I do that, I wanna just mention that the war for jurors, we, we need to talk about, um, about replacing our dump truck. What, what, what we got, we didn't budget, man, this thing been going, it's a ninety-six Mack, and we got over a million miles on it, and, uh, we just thought, well.
Best truck to flee.
We thought.
Just broke in.
We don't live along another year. We're not gonna live another year, so we, we need to plan to talk about that, till we find, I hope it'll be useful, but anyway.
And this is for, you said?
But, uh, if, if, if y'all will look at your, your report, we can go over it. Um, I kinda did it different this year. I put, I put some other, because I, I get questions from some of the newer jurors, but, um, this, this is the sixth report that I've done to the jury. I try to give y'all a report every year of what, what we've done, some highlights, and, um, like everybody knows, we have an equipment shed at the road office. Our dump sites, Barry's been working the last few years on getting water to all the dump sites. Um, I know the dump sites are part of us, it won't, but I've been mentioning it, so I'm gonna keep on. Um, he's got sixteen of the eighteen sites have water. The other two, uh, Bird's working on, and they'll be, they'll be done soon. So, pretty soon, all of them have water at, at the facility to, uh, keep the compactor buried. Barry does real good on keeping all the compactors and, and, uh, platform people pull up, pressure washed and everything cleaned and searched as well. Um, about six hundred and forty tons of coal mix we use, um, that's about normal. We issued sixty-six citations. I've never put all the other years underneath it, but I did, I did this time so y'all have an idea for comparison of what we do. Um, you can see what we've done the previous years. Uh, last year, we laid twenty-one miles of asphalt. You see, the year before, our first year, we did twenty-seven miles, um, and then pretty insignificant for below that, but that was for the contractors. Um, we processed five hundred eighty work orders. Keep in mind, that's, that's, that's five hundred eighty. So, if Kenny Young calls in one time, or he calls in twenty times. We, our work, the way we got the work orders is by individual, so that's five hundred individuals. Now, that's, I mean, if somebody hadn't called in multiple times, because we do have plenty of those, but that's how we keep record. Um, I broke down by each order to see, um, how many, who, who, who are the highlights, you know? It's always two and three.
Mm-hmm.
It, it, it just is.
So, maybe you can see what we've done. War, war went way down there.
War, seven, three.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then the last one is, uh, road damage money that we collect, I break it out of the year, all the percentages of who, who does, you know, uh, who does what, and, um, that's just, you know, free reference.
I'd like to give Bobby a pat on the back about collecting this money from these pipelines.
You bet, me too.
Because for years and years, they went and tore our roads up, not just pipelines, but years ago, when I had Pulp Station Road, Texas Eastern went in there and rebuilt their plant, and they destroyed that road. Not that it's ever been great, but they, they really hammered it. And nobody made an effort to get anything, except me. I called all the way to Texas of Eastern's office in Houston and basically, yeah, we'll, we'll work on that. And that was the last I heard of it, and they tore the road all to pieces. Bobby has got some money that we never dreamed we could get that kind of numbers, and thank you again for getting that.
And, and I, and I wanna brag on, 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 um.
Me?
On the people who, on the people who contribute and that we don't have one out there, because, look, there's, there's, um, there's local loggers that just do their part. Without us, we keep it up.
He's sucking up, ain't he, Hootie? He's saying it cause you're here.
Shane's back here. Um, I, I spent, uh, two days ago, we spent a good bit of the morning with Roy Martin on the road. Not picking on Roy Martin, but I, I really brag on him because there are those that, that just do the responsible thing, you know? No fault their own. Sometimes roads get damaged, sometimes they just get affected. Now, I won't say they beat them out or tear them up, but, you know, those are the guys that just do the responsible thing and fix it. We don't account for that, but there's, there's doodles of that around to, um, to, to, to contribute to our public roads, and without those guys doing the right thing, you know, we'd be, we'd be in bad shape. So, I, I applaud those that, that step up and do the right thing, and there are many, many of those guys.
Several of them loggers have their own dump trucks, I mean, so they can just.
You know, I have a problem down on Prospect and, and Purgal Star where these log trucks can make the turn. I, I briefed the Parsonage the other day. I was there three days. I watched every day of it. I called you, we talked about it. But these pipeline trucks, it's all in a sixty-foot joint of pipe, four of them at a time. That trailer's way longer than a log trailer. They're the ones taking asphalt and pushing it out into the woods. I watched it happen, but then they wanna rap and say that the loggers are just as, you know, much to blame as they are, because they were actually hauling out of there too. You can watch every log truck come out of there, and they're making the turn.
Well.
And these guys, when they turning, they off the edge of the road, and they pushing that asphalt, and they just breaking it, pushing it further out. And I mean, I saw it. They can't tell me they're not the ones tearing this up for work.
And, and on those cases, Shane's here, he's part of the conversation, that, that, that we, we try to look and, and, and as a group, I met, I met with pipeline out there one day. Um, we then went out there and met separately, just because we didn't all meet together. Um, but, but we all have conversations that include each other, because if there are multiple haulers on the road, we have to include mo- everybody on that road, to be fair. So, we had what we thought was a very fair conversation, um, and, and I'm not trying to speak for Shane, you can speak up if you want to, Shane, but, uh, we talked, um, about how to, um, equally share responsibility, and, and, and in all, in all cases, uh, we contribute as well, because it's our road. We don't ever wanna come across as, as that, you know, we're just, uh, sitting back, you know, taking or expecting, you know, we.
But I wanna say one thing about these two guys, Shane and Hootie. They're here all the time.
Yep.
That says something for y'all, just being here, and, and y'all do put out money, you know, to, to fix what's messed up. We have those guys that come in and complain about having to do this, and they don't come until they have to complain about something. But, but these guys are here, they're here every month. I mean, Hootie, he takes a vacation every now and then, don't come, but, oh, he's always been here since I've been in on the jury, he's always been here.
So, back to reiterate what I started, two and a half million dollars in twenty-three that went directly to our roads was a great hit on your part, Bobby. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, our own partner is involved in that. Y'all know that, but it's not by, it's, it's the road partner and all of our guys, our, our important deputies, they, they work as hard as I do on, on, on keeping up with information. It, it's, it's an effort. Everybody knows that. Nobody writes, nobody writes a big check for you.
But we never got that kind of money until you started doing it.
I agree with you.
I, for one, am proud of it. Uh, now with that said, when it's all over, I'll plus that to you about something else, so whatever. Don't let it go to your head.
I make most of my adjournments.
I'll second that.
Motion by Bo, second by Bruce, all in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Who cares? Thank you, guys. No one in the book.